Now, on record. Let me pull up my screen again here. So, welcome to the fourth and final Rhodes and Villages at Cascadehead Urban Renewal Advisory Committee Meeting. So, this is meeting number four in the process of creating our urban renewal area draft plan and report. So, in the agenda packet were the meeting minutes from the last meeting. And I know Deanna sent a few edits to those we've made on our notes before we submit them to be posted. Are there any other comments on the meeting minutes from the February 18th meeting? Seeing none. And then do we want to go ahead and approve those minutes, given the few changes we'll make based on Deanna's comments that she made?
Sorry, I don't understand. Deanna's comments in the version we were sent?
No, sorry. So, she sent an email to us and there were a few typographical errors that were made. And so, we've made those changes after they were already sent out.
Okay.
But we'll just make those changes before they're posted to the city's website.
Okay, but nothing substantive?
Correct.
I would just like, for example, Anne Marie is actually two words. So, I just tagged those kind of things. No biggie.
So, do we, are we all comfortable with, or I guess if you're not comfortable with approving those meeting minutes, raise your hand, or if your video is off, maybe put something in the chat?
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February 18th meeting.
Second.
Okay. And then all those in favor?
Aye.
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 And opposed? There are none, thank you. Okay, so now we just want to, before we jump into today's meeting, just give a brief overview for anyone that may be watching this meeting. Once it concludes, just an overview of what this advisory committee has done. So, we've, like I said, this is the fourth meeting, as you all know. And then, part of our public input process through this, creating the draft plan and report, we've had two public forums, one on January 7th, 2020, and one on February 18th of 2020. We also created an online survey to make input available for anyone that was unable to attend those public forums. We also had a briefing with the overlapping taxing districts and sent out memos to make sure they were aware of the potential financial impacts to the taxing districts. We've also had interaction with the Rhodes and Improvement Association, and that's been really helpful to communicate with community members that live in Rhodes End, which will be most able to see the projects that are going to be implemented in the area. And then lastly, we've had two briefings to city council as this plan has been formulated to go through the financial impacts, as well as the list of proposed projects to be completed in the area. And we're going to talk about the most recent city council briefing on March 23rd. City council made the decision to do a 15% revenue sharing. So, I'm going to turn it over to Elaine, if that's okay Elaine, to talk a little bit about what that decision means.
Yes, so, city council met in executive session on two separate times to talk about the financial impacts to taxing districts. And that topic came up really initially because of input from the fire chief. And then, as Mr. Chandler was reviewing the impacts and the impacts on the city's own budget, we came up with the idea of doing a revenue sharing. And a revenue sharing not just on potential new construction, but on all tax increment proceeds throughout the life of the plan. So, that, what was presented to the city council were some different variations, the 15% being the largest revenue sharing. And that was the direction from the city council was in the draft plan to include a 15% total revenue sharing on an annual basis. So, that's revenue sharing of both that 3% increase that goes up every year on all of our property tax bills and on any potential new construction. At that same city council meeting, there was a motion to extend the duration, the proposed duration of the plan by the timeframe that would allow the urban renewal area to complete the projects talked about as we formulated this plan in total. Because the 15% revenue sharing reduces the amount of money, you need to extend the urban renewal plan to make up for that potential lost money. So, we went back to Tiberia Solutions who did the analysis and it increased the duration by an estimated two years. So, instead of it being a potential 25-year plan, it's a 27-year plan. So, that was the direction city council gave us. That's what is actually implemented in the draft documents that you all have. And that isn't something we really went over with the committee. That was really a decision, a policy decision that was a city council decision and direction. Are there any questions on that?
This is Katie. I have a question. Is that revenue sharing, you had mentioned the city's own budget plus the fire district budget, is that revenue sharing across all tax districts or across those two specifically?
It's across all taxing districts. So, you aren't allowed to do revenue sharing for just specific districts. You have to do it for everybody. So, it is for all taxing districts, including the county.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question. I am not a finance person, so could you, in simple terms, explain what that means? The revenue sharing under, or revenue sharing with the counties?
Yes. So, let's say, I'm going to bring up a document so I can look at it and give you something that's a real number. In the report on the plan, and we looked at impacts to taxing districts. So, if the total amount of tax increment revenues in the first year of taking tax increment revenues was estimated at, let's say, $170,000. What will happen is the city of Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency, when they fill out the form to the assessor's office to take their division of tax revenues, they'll only authorize taking 85% of those revenues. That other 15%, so 15% of $170,000, would get distributed back to the other taxing districts. So, they wouldn't have the impact to their budgets of that 15%. One of, I guess I should have gone over the rationale really for doing this. And that was that there is a large amount of tax exempt property within the area. And once that tax exempt property goes on the tax rolls, it is projected to be after the urban renewal area is in operation. So, all of that increased assessed value would end up going to the urban renewal agency, even though the other taxing districts would be required to provide services to that area. So, it was felt that because of the fact that they aren't getting anything in that frozen base, which is what we have talked about as the amount that all the taxing districts continue getting, it's the assessed value at the time the urban renewal area is established, for those tax exempt properties that are under city ownership, there is no frozen base. Nobody's getting any taxes off of that. So, by giving 15% annually, it provides some income to all the different taxing districts to help them provide additional services in the area.
Okay. So, there are no strings attached to that in terms of how they spend that money?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other? Next slide, Jody. So, the two documents that you received are the Tax Increment Finance Plan. And we use the terminology tax increment finance instead of urban renewal in these documents. So, hopefully that's not confusing to people. The reason we did that is the Oregon Economic Development Association has a subcommittee of tax increment finance specialists across the state. And one of the recommendations of that subcommittee last summer, and when they reissued their best practices manual, was to try to transition from calling urban renewal plans, urban renewal plans, to calling them tax increment finance plans. And this is really because of the historical bad uses of urban renewal that sometimes use of that verbiage brings up. And that, that kind of use of urban renewal doesn't really happen anymore. So, it was thought by the statewide organization, OEDA, that renaming the plans to tax increment finance plans, which is really what they are, is a better way to present the plan to the public. So, this plan, yes, Deanna?
Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt already. I was thinking actually the opposite, at least around here. For us to try and explain what a TIF plan is, first of all, it makes me think of the transportation, or the road projects, street projects that we partner with ODOT, and trying to get grants that way through TIF grants, and so, or TIF funding. So, this is not, this is not easier for us to explain, at least I'm speaking for myself. I would, I actually like urban renewal because that means something around here. For Lincoln City, it's a very positive, I've only heard good things about the urban renewal projects and how they were coordinated and all the planning, all the public involvement. It's been a really good thing for Lincoln City, I think. And so, to turn that into something that people don't identify with, I don't think it's a good thing for Lincoln City. Because we do have a good idea of what urban renewal does. It's made a lot of good, a good, it's been a benefit to Lincoln City overall. And so, to go to something new and different, I'm not, I don't think, I don't think it's good for us.
I think that's great input. And I'm working with other cities and some of them are making the change and some aren't. We asked at the staff level, but it's pretty easy for us to go in and change this terminology back, if that's the direction of the committee. So, Allison or Mr. Chandler, do either of you want to chime in here, or anybody else on the committee?
Yeah, we just had some discussion about it. And because the document is going to be a 27-year document, we thought we should go with the best practice recommendation of the naming convention. And you're right, Chair Hinton, that, you know, locally, we have a very good reputation, I think, for urban renewal. It's more the national historical projects of urban renewal that are sometimes a concern. I know for myself, before I moved here, I thought, oh, I'm going to go work for urban renewal. That's not good. Because I had some, you know, preconceived notions of what that meant. And then coming here and seeing how urban renewal is used locally is completely different and, I think, very positive. So, again, you know, Elaine mentioned it's not that hard to change it back. I think what we could do is, if there's some consensus on the committee, we can just make that a recommendation as it goes forward, that we'd like to, you know, discuss it and have that be a decision of, should it be named one or the other? Or maybe it should be TIF parentheses, urban renewal, or something like that. I know it does get confusing, especially with our existing area. The name of that area is the Year 2000 Development Plan. And the title of it is confusing. And so, I understand the importance of making sure we have the right name when we talk about documents that are, you know, such a long time.
Yeah, I would just, I would just like to say again that, you know, we don't live elsewhere. We live here. We built up, thanks in large part to you, Allison, built up this, you know, this, I know, there are people before you, but you-
Many, many people.
You've been doing a great job. And our partners are local. And I just, I think if we try something, a new name, it's not going to be beneficial for the work that we want to do. And anyway, I just, I feel strongly about it, I guess.
I'm glad you brought it up, so we can talk about it and hear from others, too.
In terms of process, Allison and Jody, should we take a vote, poll through the committee to see what their recommendation is, so that, so that we know if that's, I think, process-wise, for me, that would be helpful. Because if, you know, if that's a unanimous feeling of the committee, then, then I think we just check back in with Mr. Chandler's on the line and just see what staff thinks and go from there.
Sure, I think if we can take a minute to do that, that'd be great.
Well, I would just chime in here that it seems that it has been presented to the public as urban renewal. And that's something, as Chair Hinton said, is familiar to the public. And it just sort of seems to me like your efforts, Allison, have maybe changed the opinion of urban renewal, not just yours, but maybe others. So, I'm comfortable leaving it as urban renewal.
Perfectly said, I agree.
So, I'll be the counter and say, you know, this is going to be a 27-year plan. And, you know, if people who do this more than we do as a city have recommended, you threw in the, a change of name, to put it more what it is, the incremental financing, you know, I have, I have to explain to people what urban renewal is. So, I would disagree that the citizens of Lincoln City or county know what urban renewal is anyway, you know, without a lot of explanation. And, you know, I just think, go with what the, what's going to be more prominent in the future.
I'm actually more offended with the inclusion of at Cascadehead in the title than I am, whether it's TIF or urban renewal.
Well, slide over, slide over next to Deanna. She is too. Now I know where, now I know where it's all coming from.
Yeah, don't be so sure.
I can see, I can see both sides of this. I think, however, I lean towards if we started with one thing, and because that is familiar and known, we should continue with that, with that language. If we'd started with the other and been able to explain that as a part of the process, beginning part of the process, then I think it would have been different and nice to fold in with what may be in the future. But, but I would lean toward keeping it as something that it started out as, so, urban renewal.
I get, if I can, again, I don't know where, I hear a lot of complaints and concerns about urban renewal. There is a perception in the public of what urban renewal is. And, you know, that's why you keep hearing blight all the time. Justify why you've done something with urban renewal. Where's the blight you cleaned up? You know, on and on and on. And, and that kind of stuff is what's attached to urban renewal. And, you know, what's it now been, 30 years later, you know, we're still, quite frankly, paying a price for our first urban renewal in a, now, on the same hand, I appreciate everything we've done and done it right, but there is a perception. So, to me, you know, here's a time to change. This isn't the urban renewal district that we did along Highway 101. This is something completely different. It's in a, an established neighborhood, Rhodes End. You know, it's, it's not urban renewal by any means. It's going to be hard to explain. I think you get away from that when you can say, look, you know, we used a financing package, because that's what this is. It's a financing package to develop and improve an area. So, but, you know, it won't matter, quite frankly, it won't matter at all what the name is, because nobody will read this report anyway, except for the first month. So, you know, we can all refer to it whatever we want. And to me, I lean towards financing.
So, will the definitions that are in the plan change? I mean, I assume that blight will still be used as a defining term for identifying projects, et cetera. So, I, I'm just, I don't want us to, to, I mean, we're already getting, if you're already getting complaints about this urban renewal plan, changing the name, I don't know that that really addresses the issue people might have with the plan.
Well, let me, let me clear up. I'm not getting complaints about this plan, because this plan isn't out there that far.
Right.
It's urban renewal in general has a stigma definition attached to it, right or wrong. And the naysayers about that concept, and they'll always be out there, but they quickly attach to urban renewal. So, again, I don't care either way. It's not a, it's not a deal breaker for me. I'm just looking 27 years out. And, you know, if we're getting advice, you know, that the, there's, that words and definitions are changing, then, you know, why we wouldn't is all I'm putting on the table. Just because you were all too much on one side, I had to have the counter argument.
Always, of course. I just, I just have something, we can call it our, you know, urban renewal, and then in parentheses, we can put TIF, and then everyone will say, what the heck is TIF?
You know, Deanna, to that point, I think it feels like we're changing the name in the middle of the project. If this discussion happened a year ago, we probably could have gone with TIF. But right now, it feels like, wait a minute, I thought we were doing urban renewal. What's TIF?
This is Katie. I'm going to be the true politician here and split down the middle. And I would suggest you leave the plan maybe written as urban renewal, but then in parentheses next to it, put whatever the new name is. Because I think, I think people are right that switching the name in the middle of the project is challenging. But then also, Dick is also right that, you know, if at a national level, they're changing the name, is it 27-year plan, 27 years from now, people are going to read that and say, what's urban renewal? So, I would suggest use urban renewal, put in parentheses a new name, and then you're covered both ways.
I think that's a good idea. And I was thinking along that when, when I was hearing conflicting, I was thinking, well, how can we do a little bit of both? So, I will work with staff to figure out how to do that, to have urban renewal, and then in parentheses, say TIF, and maybe have a little introduction just about why urban renewal and TIF are two different terms, if that works for people.
Is there any chance, Katie, can you turn up your mics, fighting, anyway?
Let me work on that.
Okay.
So, having said that, I will go now through the plan. So, we had talked about in our committee meetings, the different components of the plan. The maximum indebtedness has moved a little bit in it, and it moves because of the revenue sharing, because of the length of the time. But the important thing to understand is that maximum indebtedness is still projected to be able to cover the projects that we have been reviewing. So, even though that number has moved around a little bit, the thing of value, I think, to this committee is the project list has remained intact, and the forecasts that we're using show that you ought to be able to do this project list, given the projected development that might occur in the area with a maximum indebtedness of $87,100,000. Goals and objectives, the actual, yours is the only urban renewal agency I've worked with that has the urban renewal agency goals and objectives. So, separate from the Year 2000 Development Plan. So, we took the actual agency goals and objectives, and staff came up with goals and objectives specifically for this urban renewal area. So, that's what that section four of the plan is. And if you want to go through those or look at those, Jody can pull that up on the screen. Or if you've already looked at them and feel comfortable, we don't need to do that. So, if anybody wants us to pull that up on the screen, why don't you raise your hand or otherwise let us know. Okay. Project descriptions. We basically use the project descriptions we had been using all along and added a little bit of verbiage and made it so that some of these descriptions would last a longer timeframe. So, one of the things we did for sure was we changed where it said just sidewalks to sidewalks slash pathways, because that was something that Chair Hinton asked us to do in the city council meeting. But we also then took out specific kind of limiting, limiting factors, if we were talking about just X feet of something, just to make it more generic, so, because those things will change over time. So, we put these in verbiage that we thought would last throughout the life of the plan and into these specific categories. So, they haven't changed a lot, just some word smithing on those. So, are there any questions about any of those descriptions?
I had a question on, let's see, parks, trails, and open spaces. Let's see, it is, there's, there's a bullet point that, I know these were very closely aligned with the original list of projects.
Yes.
But there was one that I was curious about, and it's under C, parks, trails, and open spaces, and it's, it starts out pedestrian striping on Logan Road. It seemed like there was a lot more detail to that bullet point that was new. And I was just curious, did that come up in public input? And so, that you decided to put in the additional detail or clarification on, on what that might include? So, just curious.
Allison, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we did was sent a draft of this through to the city, and then the city sent it to all city staff. And I think that the public works folks filled in the verbiage on this. Allison, can you, or Jody confirm that?
Yes, that's exactly what happened. So, there were, it just was a greater, more knowledgeable people were looking at what the project descriptions were at this last iteration.
That's what I saw, thanks.
So, Allison, I have a question about that then. Because when you and I chatted at one point, you suggested that the project descriptions- you suggested that, um, the project descriptions needed to be, um, broad because if they were too specific, they locked us down. So now looking at this, I see, um, some very general statements on the bullets. And then as Janet pointed out, you get to that one and wow, that seems pretty locked in to what would happen. And so how does that work when we in the future have visioning meetings? And people don't agree with that particular description? Does that then take that project away?
Yeah, it's, um, we try to address everybody's, um, interests for the project. When it comes down to it, the city has certain infrastructure needs that, um, it is required to respond to through like the transportation system plan, for example, um, or, you know, any number of plans that actually address deficiencies in the infrastructure systems. And, um, how a project, let's see, when the plan gets adopted, like our 1988 plan and it had, um, projects identified, some in detail, some not, um, by the time the project is moving into vision, design, engineering, permitting, the project can take on a different character because of time lapses between when a plan is adopted and when a project gets constructed. It doesn't mean that the project has to look like this. This is our best guess at this time. If, um, for example, Chair Hinton had mentioned that, um, she was not interested in the word sidewalk because it had certain connotations. And so we added sidewalk slash pathway just to provide a little more meaning over the lifetime of this document to really reflect that it may not be a sidewalk, it may be a pathway, it may be a shared use path. It may be, um, uh, I don't know, some other landscape surface that makes sense. And so I don't know if I'm answering your question or I'm just rambling, but I know that the project descriptions are sometimes general, sometimes specific, um, just like they are in our 1988 plan. And how a project comes out the other side when it's actually constructed may be the same or may be different. And, and how it changes is based on that funnel that I described with community visioning and design. And if the physical situation has changed on that street. Logan Road is also a very long road. And there are certain sections of that road that may require different treatments. You know, it's curvy in some places, it's straight stretches in another place. And so I think that what this is really trying to get at is that there are going to need to be different types of solutions to address a lot of different issues on this long street.
I think what we could do, um, I, is add in some verbiage to that that implies that this is what comes from the TSP now. But, um, other, um, ways to address the sidewalk pathway deficiencies, um, are acceptable. So a lot of times we say included, but not limited to. So that means if you make changes on this, then it gives you more flexibility. So you don't have to go in and do an amendment to your plan. So that might help here.
The, what I was, I guess what I took away from our previous conversation was that the project list is more about interest driven rather than specific project. So the, for example, we talked about different ways to slow traffic down on Logan, which really addresses, I think, the interest, which is public safety along Logan. And there are a lot of different ways to do that. And so when I suggested one of them could be something that people, some people don't like, you suggested we probably shouldn't put that in because it would limit. And then people could just say no to that as opposed to acknowledging that the interest is public safety along a dangerous road. And then that opens up the potential for a number of different projects to be discussed during the visioning. So that's where I'm, I'm having a little bit of problem reconciling what I'm seeing here versus what I thought we were doing in preparation for, uh, maybe a more rigorous visioning process down the line.
Yeah, and we will have that process. So is there something in particular in this list here under C, parks, trails and open space? That is, um, doesn't feel right to you or is it just that it's more detail?
Well, it's, it's just the, the mix of no detail and extreme detail. I mean, the first bullet, improved access to trailheads and parking, that's a fairly general.
Pretty broad.
And that's an intent, I believe. And then you go down to one, two, three for the fifth bullet, and it's very specific as to what would happen on a particular stretch of the road. So I'm just trying to understand how we can have such variability in the list of projects without eliminating or, or boxing ourselves into one thing and not another.
And I think variability happens because that language is probably in the TSP right now. So that project's already been gone through a vetting process. It's in your transportation system plan. They know exactly what the needs are, where the community park came from the parks plan and it's described differently. I, I think we can solve this by putting at the beginning of pedestrian striping saying, uh, address, um, public safety issues, including, but not limited to. And then go ahead and keep that in because that is what's in your TSP. That, that is something that's already been vetted and approved to say to do all of these things, but it wouldn't limit you to having that be the only thing.
Again, the TIP is a way to fund existing projects. Is that right?
The TSP is, I think, a 20-year look at our transportation system and what is needed. It doesn't mean that there's funding allocated, um, you know, and those projects have to be vetted. It just, just using a transportation lens, where do we have deficiencies? What improvements are needed?
Okay.
And, and I think that this, um, the mention about Logan Road in this section for parks, trails and open space, I believe Logan Road is mentioned also in a different part of the project list. So, um, the, the thing to remember is that Logan Road is a major part of the Rhodes End community and kind of like a spine, like Highway 101 is for the rest of town. And, um, I mean, just geographically speaking, but, um, I think that, um, there are different goals and objectives and pedestrian safety is the main objective. And it just like it is on Highway 101. But, um, I, I think that this is using the parks, trails and open space lens. This is how there are some opportunities to address Logan Road, uh, which again is parks, trails and open space. So they're really talking about sidewalk pedestrian network in, in this section.
I, I think it would be important to add in the language, Elaine, that you suggested simply because, well, for all of the reasons that, that Patty has mentioned too, that we're talking about. But the other is, this is, we're talking a minimum of 10 years from now. And we don't know, we don't know what Logan Road is going to look like in 10 years. We don't, there's, uh, we don't know anything really. So this is, this is a, a point in time, uh, about what is in the transportation plan. Staff is seeing, people are seeing, this needs to be done at this moment. So I think broadening it for the purposes of this plan would be really important so that, uh, given there are, uh, could be terrific changes in our neighborhood and on Logan Road, uh, that, that it's more, it's, it's more flexible. The second thing, the second thing that I, I have an overarching question and I don't know if this is the time to talk about it, but, uh, but Patty was alluding to it a little bit. And some of these things I understand are already in the existing transportation plan. And now they're going to be in the urban renewal plan. And so some of the language in both of the documents that we got referred to, the, the fact that things, uh, may be more urgent in nature. I think there are a number of things, um, that are in the transportation of plan in the, in the list of things that, that residents of Rhodes End identified that we see as urgent. So I guess my question is, if now they appear in the urban renewal plan, does that mean that they automatically go off of the list to be considered as projects that would get done by Public Works, for instance, as, as a routine, as, as part of the transportation plan or part of routine maintenance?
That's a great question. Um, and I know Mayor Anderson probably has something to say about that because, um, I remember one of the, um, points about how to spend the remaining urban renewal dollars for our existing area. Um, I remember one point was, um, what projects on this list will not have the opportunity to be done using city money? We want to be mindful about how we spend our money. We don't want to, um, yeah, I mean, uh, we, we don't want the urban renewal budget to replace all of Public Works budget. It's a funding opportunity, we want to actually leverage it. So again, with the Cutler City Pump Station, we partnered and leveraged urban renewal money with Public Works money, which they were already going to have to upgrade that pump station. And we were able to combine funding sources to come out with an even better project. So, uh, if it's on the list of projects in the plan, it means we have the opportunity to use urban renewal or TIF dollars on that project. It may pay 100% of the project, it may pay 50% of the project. It just means that we have that ability to use those dollars on these projects. Um, Elaine, do you want to add anything or Mayor Anderson kind of dragged you into that?
I'll let the mayor go first.
Go ahead, Elaine.
I, I think Allison did a great job of explaining that the urban renewal is used to try to move things up on a priority list. So if there's funding to do transportation projects and that funding would have gone to some of these projects, but you don't have quite enough to do it, or you, you want, you, you need a little more than urban renewal can step in and make that project move higher on the list, not, and that's typically what happens, not lower on the list. So it just adds an additional capacity for the city to make things happen sooner.
I would agree. And I, I was happy to hear Allison use the word leverage, um, because that's the same reason why we do the transportation plan. One, to satisfy the state so that we can, um, go after state money. And Patty, that, that's probably what you're hearing is, uh, and remembering tied to financing is if it's not on the transportation plan, we, we aren't able to really go in and get state money for the project. So it's good to have it all over the place, um, so that we can point to a plan and say, we've thought about it. Now we're working on the financing. So I would agree, it doesn't lose status by any means. It's, it's a way to just find more partners.
But, but based on the, the use of the urban renewal funds being delayed for a decade.
Exactly.
Does it push those projects back a decade? Or, or alternately, and I don't, I don't know how this works, but can the city borrow against the urban renewal funding if they want to do a project in advance of when the money would be in the urban renewal pot?
Oh, well, we're already borrowing with a bond, going to the market to get a pot of money. That, that's how we find it. We don't, we, you know, as Elaine explained, we wait for the tax money to come in and that pays the debt service for the bond. So we're, we're doing what you're suggesting when we know we can pay for the initial borrowing, which is the bond levy.
Urban renewal sometimes does also, if, if the city can pay for it out of other transportation funds, but it's in an urban renewal plan, the urban renewal agency and the city can have an agreement to pay back the city for money that they've spent when that urban renewal money comes in. So I think that's what you're talking.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I was asking.
And that is.
Somehow leverage that.
And you may do that. Okay.
So, so I understand, I guess my last question is, uh, does that mean for, for the projects, say for instance, that, that Rhodes End identified and, uh, under the public works category, does that mean, is there a way for us to know if some of those will get done as a part of the regular public works projects over the next 10 years? Or do we now tell people in Rhodes End that none of these projects are going to get done? It may be funded out of urban renewal later, it may be a combination, but really none of these projects will get done for 10 years anyway? Is, I, I guess my question is now people, it's sort of on the tips of people's tongues. They're excited about getting some of these things done in Rhodes End. So, so I'm not sure how to respond to that. Simply because of the long time lag before we have the community visioning process.
Given the environment we are in and in the middle of budget time, I can sure you, we're probably not adding to the coffers right at the moment for, um, you know, capital projects, depending on the money source, of course. But I, I hear what you'd like. I'm kind of chuckling because I'm sure Allison heard long ago in some of the first visioning, um, projects of, of all the things that wanted to be done. And we circled around and I, you know, I'm, I'm thinking the last project, this bloody sidewalk, you know, was clearly way up in front as a desirous project. And, you know, given, you know, timing, 30 years later, it's not even done. So it, it, you know, it's so hard to tell. I, we, we certainly prioritize based on wear and tear and, and need on all these public work projects. And then we get a broken pipe or a, you know, washed out road and things get nixed. So it's, we should, we should all hope to live long enough to see them all done, I would say that.
So that, that brings up another question I have there. And that is if, if, um, if we are, say we're in the middle of this, um, process. So we're, we're past the 10 years and we now have some money in a pot and we're going to try to figure out what projects to do. And then something happens, some disaster strikes in the city. Is the money that is in the urban renewal pot, um, protected? Or is it available for the city to utilize if necessary to address pressing issues that come up?
Do you want me to jump in on that, Allison? And, and somebody else can. So that's a great question and we've had, I, I can't tell you how many urban renewal agencies I've been talking to in the last month about that specific issue. Urban renewal funds may be spent in an urban renewal area on designated projects, period. If an emergency comes up like the one that we're in, if there's not a project, that urban renewal money can't be spent on something unless you amend your plan and identify new projects. So some urban renewal agencies right now are amending their plans and changing, um, so that they can loan to businesses, but making sure that they do it in a way that meets what the statute is. So, you know, if, if there's an earthquake and Lincoln City has all of these problems and they're saying, where can we get that money? That urban renewal money can't be used for addressing those things unless they're capital projects that are in the plan. You may amend the plan and add some projects if you need to in the future. So let's say there's an earthquake and Logan Road goes away completely. So, let's say there's an earthquake, and Logan Road goes away completely, and you need to rebuild Logan Road. Since it's in the district, that, you could amend the plan and change that project to be a total reconstruction. But you can't just divert the money from this area and say, "Gosh, now down in Nelscott, we had this horrible landslide, and we need to address issues down there." You can't, you can't do that.
And Allison, Elaine, you might, Patty may be hearing, because we're on the coast. You know, Newport is trying to redo, but they're, they're not even doing projects. They're, they've more concluded type of unwinding to give money to businesses.
Yeah, so Newport is, their urban renewal areas at a different point in time than ours is. We are in our last bond. And when you have a bond out that your TIF dollars are paying back, which is the only thing you can do with your TIF dollars, because you are indebted, then you have bond documents and requirements that you have to abide by. With Newport's plan and their area, they are new enough that they have not collected enough money in order to do a bond. So, they are not yet indebted, which means they had a little more flexibility. While they had flexibility, we had none for our existing area. Although we do also already have loan programs. And even though those loans are not directly for emergency assistance, they can be used if people have capital improvement plans that they need to do, that they are scheduled to do with contractors, and they can't get reimbursed. I don't know what situations there might be for our small businesses. We know there are lots of urgent issues right now, in particular. But if somebody wanted to apply and get a 0% interest loan for a facade improvement, and use their other funds that they were going to use for that project, and use our loan to free up other available funds for different reasons, you know, there are still tools that we have. They're just not, you know, created and done specifically for COVID-19.
So, I have a question about that, because as the countywide school district, we have some taxing authority, and we have monies that we bring in via taxes. I was concerned, and this is the wrong meeting for this, but I was concerned about what Newport was doing with regards to the, like, small loans that they're planning on using this money for. I've just never heard of urban renewal dollars being used for anything but capital projects, or, you know, ways for people to maybe, I don't know, fix things up if things fell down, but not to have loans to people, or to give people... Anyway, so we sent that information to the Department of Revenue to ask them to look at with regards to, do they need permission from the district? Or, because if that affects the district's funding, we're going down in flames at the moment. That's not going to make me happy. Just curious, probably the wrong meeting for this, but anyway.
This is, Debbie, I had the same question. Like, how is that possible, they can do that?
Well, I asked.
Legally.
And it's legally, that's, the question is, what's the legality? So, we do have the question-
Have you heard back from them?
What's that?
Have you heard back from the Department of Revenue?
I'm certainly, I'm planning to hear back from somebody with the name Benjamin. As a last name.
Just, this is a really delicate issue, political issue, and it's something I've been working on for the last month. In fact, today I just updated my website and took off something that I had put on about COVID-19. But my advice to my clients was, make sure whatever you're doing complies with what you're allowed to do under ORIS 457. And if you're doing something different, make sure you have a legal opinion backing you up that that's something you may do. So, I hear what you're saying, Dr. Gray, and I, I, there's not much more I can say.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I'm done. It just was like something that's like freaking me out, so.
Yeah, I hear you. So, I have a suggestion on this one project we're talking about. I'm not totally sure why I put the pedestrian striping under parks, trails, and open space, only that that pathway may have been construed as a trail, and maybe that whole project should go up under transportation instead, and go right by in transportation. If you move up a little bit, Jody, to the transportation projects, there's Logan Road, Northeast Portland Safety Improvements, including but not limited to intersection realignment, roundabout, or always stop control. And adding within that less specificity than what we have put down below, but identifying those types of activities that we identified below, which are pedestrian striping, constructing new facilities to deal with deficiencies, so that it becomes less specific than what we have. That's now housed under parks, trails, and open space, but that type of activity still is allowed, and we have it under transportation. Does that make sense to folks?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I appreciate the input on that, and that makes a lot of sense to me, and we can make that change easily. Were there other project questions?
I have one other one. Under the Public Works Utilities, ooh, there it is. The second bullet that talks about the Logan Creek improvements, replacing the culvert with the Fish Passage, blah, 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 to the ocean at the state recreation site, is that the project that the county initially started? That we, I believe, we assumed now with the absorption of Logan Road into the city?
I believe that is the project. Oh, Commissioner Dickinson, do you want to say anything on that?
It looks like that's the project. We did give Lincoln City money for that project as well, so.
So, that, thank you for that, because that's my question then. Does the money, how does, how does that work? If the city received money to do that project from the county, but then the project shows up on this list, which is a decade out, how does that happen?
Okay, I was going to say, this list shows a few things that actually are are different than what our agreement was. So, this looks like this is additional development, but I see Diana raising her hand.
Thanks, Katie. I just want to say that we will see the same project in a variety of different places, and that's not a bad thing. And as far as the funding goes for the project, when Lincoln City accepted the road from the county, that will go in a separate line item and save for this project. However, it's not going to cover the full expense of all the projects related to this project. And so, you're going to see this, and you'll see it in our budget, hopefully. Do we have to ask Ron if we got the check? But anyway, if, you'll see it in the budget, you'll see it in this document, you'll see it in Public Works' list of projects to do. You're going to see it everywhere, and that is a good thing. That, so all those pieces are coordinated. It's going to take different funding from different sources. It doesn't mean, however, that being in this list of projects, that it has to wait 10 years to get done. It's just putting it in there as one of the potential projects, depending on timing, the schedule, and how it gets designed, and all of those other pieces that will bring it to construction.
It could also be a project that's phased over time. So, there might be, you know, the county portion of dollars can address what was required in that transfer of property, and then there may be something up or downstream that can also happen that will change the overall system. It's a pretty big system.
With lots of projects associated, so. Not to worry, Patty.
All I do is worry, Diana.
You're good at it.
Are there any other project-related questions?
Yeah. I'm still seeing the undergrounding existing pole-mounted utilities under Community Connections and Appearance, rather than under Emergency Preparedness and Resiliency. And I really think that that, while the side effect is it would make it look better, it's really about public safety, particularly in the Rhodes End area.
And it's there in both places.
So, why is it in both places?
Because it fits both goals. And the other thing that isn't listed, what that that project would do, would provide square footage, I'll just say, territory to build a path. Because right now, it's pretty narrow, as you know very well. It's pretty narrow, and the poles, I am imagining, I don't know if Katie would know this detail, but I would imagine that the poles are are within the right-of-way. And so, if they were undergrounded, that would give us a couple more feet, at least, to do some planning for a pathway and any other projects related to that. But, so there's actually three reasons for the undergrounding.
And that is something that, for the Northwest 15th Street project, when we rebuilt that street in Ocean Lake, even though it wasn't in our plan that we could underground the utilities, as part of that, we did the Ocean Lake Vision, and then we identified Northwest 15th Street as the feature street of Ocean Lake that was off Highway 101. When we did community vision, project vision, I should call it, to talk about what the needs were with traffic calming and things like that, we realized that we could move all the utility poles over to one side of the street. That was discussed, and we ultimately decided that that was not what should happen for that project. But when we are talking about a street improvement project, we do look at all different things about how we can meet those objectives. And so, that, again, you know, we're at that point where we want to be general, but we want to be specific. And so, how to create a plan document that can live for 27 years and still address as much as we know now? You know, we can add some language, if that's helpful. I don't know where you might recommend, Sherhinton, but yes. That, when engineers start to look at a street, they see how much room they have, right? ODOT does it all the time, we see that on our highways. And they have to figure out how to meet the project goals within the area or the box that exists. And if creating, being creative about space is part of that design process.
So, under the bullet, under F, Emergency Preparedness, then, could we just insert the word "undergrounding" after "to" and before "pole", so that that sentence makes sense? Because now it's not limited to pole-mounted utilities. It's not clear what you intend to do to those pole-mounted utilities?
That's easy to do.
Thank you.
That work for you, Allison?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yep.
So, I'm not sure then where the, I sent this to you earlier, but, you know, that third reason for undergrounding, which would provide space, does that need to be called out, just to not? For the pathway?
I don't think it needs to be called out, if you feel better about it. I understand that. We could just say, in order to create more room, I don't know, in order to, we can think up something. To remove objects from the public right-of-way, create more space. We can, we can see if we can find something there. And were you wanting it in F as well as E?
Sure, because those are more, they're, they're looking at it from a different point of view, so.
Yeah, and really, what happens when we get to a project, we would then just say, you know, "The reason we're doing this project is because it addresses E and F in the urban renewal plan." So, it's really, the plan is just going to back up all of the projects that are going to happen. It becomes the rationale of why we're doing a project. So, in some cases, it's going to hit, you know, everything on the list, and in some cases, it might just hit one of those categories.
Yeah, today I was out walking on Logan Road and trying to visualize a pathway where the telephone poles now are. And there might be enough room, maybe. That's why I was dodging cars at the same time.
Anything else on the project? Jody, can we go back to the PowerPoint? And then, next page? So, the Amendment section of the plan, we ended up adding another type of amendment to the plan. Substantial amendments are required by statutes, and those are if you increase your maximum indebtedness or add acreage over 1%. Minor amendments are typically anything that's not a substantial amendment. When we added in the revenue sharing provision, I talked with Allison, and we decided that we needed to specifically address how you amend, or if you amend that provision, because it was something that was set out initially in the plan. So, we added it in that separate level of amendment called Council Approved Amendment. And basically, that's because city council meetings sometimes get more notice than just an agency meeting might. So, it, it is requiring a city council to approve any change to that revenue sharing provision, and then also requires notification to all of the impacting taxing districts, following the standards outlined in the statute. And we just felt that that was the prudent thing to do, just because it would impact them if we changed that. And Dr. Gray, we talked about the revenue sharing before you got on the call. One of the things city council directed us to do was to include 15% revenue sharing with all taxing districts every year, starting with the implementation of the plan. So, instead of the taxing district taking 100% of the increased assessed value growth, taxes off of that, they will take 85%, and 15% of that growth will be shared with all of the different taxing jurisdictions.
What are the, what are the, I think I should say "thank you," right? Because like, is that kind of amazing, or like what? Nobody ever gives us money, so.
It was, it was done basically because a lot of the property is owned by the city, so it doesn't have any tax status right now. But once it gets developed, all of that value goes to the urban renewal agency. And after a couple of executive sessions, the city council- And after a couple of executive sessions, the city council, um, talked about those impacts and decided that they didn't feel comfortable with all of that growth going to the agency and felt like they should share some other taxing districts, so.
That's amazingly generous.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, just saying, I mean, I just.
We're just those kind of people.
Well, evidently Ron and Dick, you guys are like crazy good. So like, that's like amazing. And so what are the stipulations on those dollars? Like, how can you spend it?
There are no stipulations.
What?
So those, I mean, for you, unfortunately, that will go to the state school fund.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, so for, for you, it's not. Yeah, it's still good because it means the state school fund will get something.
No, it's good because we all share that pot.
That's correct. That's correct. For other than you and the ESD, all of the other taxing districts will ha- get that money directly. And there are no restrictions on how they spend that money. It's just like, it's just their normal tax proceeds.
So it's just a tax proceed? Yeah, because when our taxes don't balance out with our, um, other half of our money, we do have to kind of balance that. I still think it's super generous and awesome.
Great. So anyway, that's the amendment section. And then the, in the financing of the plan section, most of that verbiage is the same in every urban renewal plan, other than we added the language on the revenue sharing to make it clear. And then there's a huge section on relationship to local objectives. And it, it doesn't, it, it is because the statute requires it. It doesn't really do anything to help you implement your urban renewal plan. It just provides the relationship that is called for in the statute and called for in the ordinance adopting the plan. That is what, um, the planning commission will consider when they, um, are presented with the plan. They'll consider whether the urban renewal plan conforms to the comprehensive plan. So that's what that section is in the plan, the, the reason for it. Are there any questions on any of those sections? Okay, next page. So the report that accompanies the plan is the supporting documentation that provides the financial feasibility of the plan and provides the information for establishing blight. The blight finding is actually made in the ordinance that adopts the plan. But, um, some, some of the information to provide that finding is housed within the report. The report isn't actually adopted by the city council. It's the plan that's adopted and it's the plan that's recorded. The report is just a technical, uh, accompanying report. So the sections of the report are all required by statute and we follow along with what the statute says. So there's the projects and existing conditions. So whatever changes we've talked about in terms of the project narrative, we will carry over and do those same changes to the report narrative. So that the project descriptions are exactly the same in both documents. So the, the, the existing conditions just tells us and the staff, Lincoln City staff went through and helped to write those, just tells us what's existing there right now or what, what is happening right now with any of those projects. So on some of them, it's that there isn't, like there isn't a park. Chair Hinton?
Oh, I didn't know you could see me. I only see four of you at a time. I just wanted to ask about one of the projects, which is, um, a parking lot on Salasie and it, it, under existing conditions. And it says that there's one there now and a second one might come in the future. We don't have one there now. There's, um, a gate and a bridge and you can park cars beside that, but maybe two, maybe four at the most. But it's not even, it's not even kind of sort of developed. It's like not at all. It's grass. You know, sometimes there's some gravel there, but, um, it's not a parking lot. So I would just correct that because it was confusing to me. I thought maybe Ron got in there in the middle of the night and, and gave us a parking lot, but I checked it. Nope.
Allison, do you have a problem with changing that?
Um, no, I think that Jody and I were checking with Public Works to see where that came from. Or there's one and it's just like invisible. We just wanted to kind of know how it landed in the plan before we.
I didn't make it up. Yeah, we'll, we'll correct that. Thank you.
Okay.
It's only used for parking stealth vehicles.
Right.
That's right. I have, I have another one too, under, um, the Public Works bullet, under existing conditions. And it, um, talks about the second culvert, back to that culvert project. When actually the, um, there are two culverts, one over the top of each other. And then there's a third one that's under Salasie and the, the not, the non-permitted part of Salasie, that someone built, um, without getting a permit. But anyway, that's history, but, um, so it's just not quite clear, that's all. It's on page 15 of the packet.
So Chair Hinton, would it help if we said second culvert location?
Yes, I think that it is, it's just a different location because two of them are together and one of them isn't, so.
Okay.
Exactly. Thank you.
Allison, you know, you know how to change that? Is that?
Yes, I've taken a note on that. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
One more, well, probably more than that, but anyway. And the other one on page 16, it's the last bullet under D, underground discussion again. That's all. I just wanted to point it out to you so you can do some with that too.
Which, which one?
D?
Yes?
Okay, um.
So, oh, to, to add the square footage sort of issue, is that what you mean? Okay, yeah, when, whenever we make a change in the, in the plan for a project, we will make that same change here.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
And there was just an edit, audit, uh, correction on page 17. On, under G, the plan administration. And then the second and the eighth bullets are almost identical.
Yes, they are. We'll check that and I'll double check that against what's in the plan too.
I had another suggestion on page 18. Under four, the estimated. Can you go up a little bit? I'm not quite seeing it. Let me, whoa, 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 back, back, back. Okay, in that section, um, okay, the, it says the title, the estimated total cost of each project and the sources of monies to pay such costs. Could we change sources of monies to funding sources?
Yeah.
Thank you. I have another edit, but I sent it to Jody. She'll probably catch it, but.
I'm going to look at the statute real quick because my bet is that that sources of money is verbiage that comes straight out of the statute. Yeah, the statute says you have to identify the estimated total cost of each project and the sources of monies to pay such costs. And that's why I use that strange language. So is it okay if we keep it to what the statute says?
Sure.
Thanks.
It was just odd.
Yeah, there are a lot of things in the statute that are odd. Anything else?
I do have another question way down there on page 48. I don't know if you want to go that far yet. Under social conditions?
Yes.
Just the 780 tax lots? And that might be totally accurate. I just know that from days gone by, meaning quite a while ago, just in Rhodes End alone, we had 902 or four or six lots. So I'm just questioning that number because that's just Rhodes End. That doesn't include the Cascara Court folks.
I'll double check that number. Um, we, we take that number from a different table where the county gives us information about the present land use on the property. So if the land, if the land is vacant and it's not being used, the land use isn't residential. So it's just anything that's actually being used as a residential use. But I'll, I'll double check it just to make sure it's right.
That could be because we have several lots that aren't developed, so. Wanted to check. Thank you.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Jody, let's go back to the PowerPoint. My neighbor's mowing his lawn. I'm sorry if you're all hearing that. Those things you can't control when you're having an online meeting. This just goes through the different sections of the, of the report. So there's the financial analysis of the plan and that's where it has those complicated tables that just shows when the TIF revenues are expected to come in and what your, uh, what, what the different projects are. It shows the annual impacts to the taxing districts in a couple of those tables. Um, it talks about the revenue sharing. Um, and then, you know, that big section that just talks about the existing conditions. So the zoning, the comp plan designations, the, uh, social conditions, the economic conditions, the improvement to land ratios. So again, all of that information is required by statute. So sometimes you may think, well, why is this information included? It's included because the statute requires that to be a component of your report. The most important things to you, I think, are those sections that talk about the financial analysis of the plan and the tax increment revenues required for the plan. So if anybody wants, uh, to walk through any of those financial sections, Jody can pull that report back up and we can walk through them if you want.
I, I just noticed a typo on, uh, in one of here. Let's see, it's under zoning designations, page 42, 43. The word single, uh, maybe, yeah, 43?
Oh, boy, that single, God, really? I see that and thank you for catching that.
You're welcome.
I never know how those things get passed, uh, past the editing and the reading, but I'm always pleased when people can find it so we can correct it before it gets to the end. That's an interesting spelling. Anything else? Let's go back then to the PowerPoint, Jody. Next page. Questions? So we especially want this to go up so that if anybody watching online has any questions, it gives a contact for Jody so that they can reach her to follow up with any questions. And then, um, our next steps are, this goes to the urban renewal agency on June 15th. To the planning commission on July 7th. And a potential Lincoln County briefing that we're hoping to schedule in July 8th. A first reading of the ordinance July 27th. And if not unanimous, a second reading on August 10th. And then a non-emergency ordinance is effective 30 days after adoption. So we all know, we don't know for sure, we all know that we don't know, that's good English, how we're going to have all of these meetings, whether they're going to be online meetings or, um, I, I know Allison told me you've done some hearings where you've set up your council chambers so that people can come in and testify if they want to testify. So all, all of that, we will be figuring out as we head into these groups of meetings. Chair Hinton?
We just have one more we need to add to that and that's the celebration afterward.
Really? And, and hopefully there won't be social distancing and I can come down and join you all for that.
I also wanted to add, um, beginning of May, we'll be sending out formal consultant confer letters to the overlapping, overlapping taxing districts. And that's something that's required, uh, so we'll be doing that. Once we get these edits that you all have said, um, we'll be sending the plan and report to the taxing districts.
And we have sent them a number of different communications and had meetings. So, um, they may be tired of hearing from us. There are a couple of you on the call. But, but hopefully we've been trying to keep you updated and make, make sure you understand the process and what's going on. So that the last one that goes out is the formal one required by statute. And it does give the taxing jurisdictions 45 days, um, a, a minimum of 45 days to respond if they want to respond in writing to the city council. I think that's the end of our presentation and if anybody has any questions or comments, it would be great to hear them.
So if I could, Elaine, um, one of the meetings we had a while back, and I, I can't remember which one, I had asked if there was any way that we could get the, um, the 20% give back on the existing urban renewal district to each taxing district. So when, when the existing urban renewal district expires, that 20% that we're collecting, how much is it per taxing district? And I'd like to compare that to then obviously, uh, this new taxing district, how much we're, we're in essence freezing. Because I, I think that will help in a presentation, um, that you, we're giving them money, 20% of a, a bigger or a different type of district and taking away from something else. And the, the numbers, I, I have no idea what the numbers will look like, but, uh, I may throw them away after you get them. But it, um, it would at least help maybe deflect some concerns.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that back up again. And we'll, um, I'll talk with Allison and we'll deal with that.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Good job.
So we're not going to see everybody again until celebration time?
Well, the agency meeting, I, we've got a lot of public meetings to go to. And this group is more than welcome. I know some of you are on those different, you know, planning commission and obviously city council and, but you're more than welcome to come to any of those meetings or, or testify or hopefully support the plan.
Well, I think that that's a really key role that we can play. I may not understand all of it, but I was part of the process. So I think when people wonder if people were part of the process, you know, the validity. So I think when people wonder if people were part of the process, you know, the validity of that, you can call upon us, too, and say, hey, superintendent, you know, you were part of this, come to the meeting, so at least your little face is there. Fortunately, I'm doing appropriate things, but, you know, that our face is there saying, yeah, we were part of this.
Thank you.
Yeah. Well, we know that this took extra time and attention out of your schedules, and we really appreciate your participation. I know this was an additional meeting, but I, I think we got some great input feedback, and, and I know I will feel better as we go forward with the next steps, having had this fourth meeting, so thank you all very much.
Thanks for organizing it, it was really helpful.
Yeah, it was, thank you.
And you know where to find us, so just because we're having this last meeting, you know, holler with any question, email Jody, email me, and, and we'll, we're happy to continue the conversation.
Did you guys say we had copies of the PowerPoint? Is that in an email?
I can send that out, and I was going to say, but since this is the, the last meeting of this advisory committee, also, once I get around to typing up the minutes, I'll be asking for your review on those before we send them to be posted, so I can send the minutes and the PowerPoints.
Yeah, PowerPoint helps me as a reference, and then I can download it into my drive, so that like if I get questions about it, at least I've got something to refer to.
Right, yeah.
That I think is going to help me to kind of like jog my, my little noodle here on what I heard. And I like the breakdown of the money on what it went to, and I think that would be, be really good for me to have. Thank you.
All right, so again, I'll put my email up again one, one more time for the purpose of posting this on the city site, so if anyone has questions or comments about this project, they can send me an email. If you all have any other questions, thank you for your time, this was really helpful.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.